I'll call this meeting over. Welcome.
Barton McLaury.
Here.
Larry Watson.
Here.
Billy Cloud.
Here.
Ray Miller.
I'm here.
Joe Clement.
Here.
Jerry Taro.
Out of number three is the lady's plea.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm the former recognized guest, we welcome all of our guests for being here today. I'm not a fan of business. Do you have anything? Is this Larry?
No.
Terry?
No.
Jamie?
No.
You have a couple things, just wanted to remind everybody that the youth livestock show will be happening February 19th. That's gonna be the goats and the cattle. We're also gonna start our, a new program, the Bucket Calf Show for the littles that night. And then February 20th will be the sale. Anyone would like to attend. We also are gonna start our Master Cattlemen class this Thursday. And people can still sign up until then. That's the year-long program. And I just wanted to let you guys know, I'm actually gonna be changing duty stations. So my position will be open sometime in probably the next month. But I wanted to say thank you for being kind to me. Being supportive of OSU Extension. We're working on recruiting somebody good to take over here, so.
Wish your health so you go. Yeah.
Said I honestly don't want to, but family matters, I think it was what was best, so.
I understand.
But I really enjoyed my time here, so.
You've done a really good job, we appreciate you. Did you have any new business out there?
No, I'm sorry.
Moving on to item six, the pro-physical procedures of the meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Barton McLaury.
Yes.
Larry Watson.
Yes.
Joey Cloud.
Yes.
Here, motion to approve.
I'll make it.
Motion to approve by Joe.
Ray Miller.
Yes.
Jerry Taro.
Yes.
Joe Clement.
Yes.
If you just sign one of those, I'll trade out this one after the meeting.
Okay. The nation.
Just makes a sign, Ray makes a sign.
Moving on to item number seven, approve of the P.O. for the health blanket. Like we have a couple, uh, $250 to O'Reilly's, three. $2,500 sticker stone. This is three.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Barton McLaury.
Yes.
Larry Watson.
Yes.
Billy Cloud.
Yes.
Out of number eight, review and sign of first monthly report for Sester, County clerk, court clerk, election board, health department, and attorney. Did we ever get that correction on the election board?
The, the paper is not correct, but Rhonda has a note on there that corrects it, so with her note on there and the signature.
That reflects this top page, but we got some other stuff. Right here. That may be, it's fixed.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Art McLaury.
Yes.
Larry Watson.
Yes.
Billy Cloud.
Yes.
[laughing] Just want to keep it going around the room. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay, moving on to item number nine, review and sign of first court clerk records management and preservation monthly report. On that motion, we sign this.
Second.
Clark McLaury.
Yes.
Larry Watson.
Yes.
Billy Cloud.
Yes.
We have about three minutes to go on item number 10. Nobody objected, we'll just, we'll just jump to the rest for a minute. Review and sign of approved finalization of rate grant for Kyo- Kyoto Community Center. You have that, John?
They're all looking around here.
Commissioners, before you approve or disapprove that, there's a little confusion there about the stove. The, the board's already voted before this was put in that it would be no stove in the community center. New stove, a larger one. It was a larger one, you'd have to tear the cabinets out, or part of the cabinets. And it's in a real small room. And then another thing that was brought up about a mixer, a big mixer, cold mixer. There's no place to put that according to Ray Jordan. So there is, there is confusion there that the board, the board doesn't even know a lot of this.
So, but in other words, it's not that they, they don't, they're not opposed to them getting a new stove, but just no kind of remodeling to accommodate something bigger, is that right?
The bigger stove will not go in the community center at all. They voted against that. That mixer is, well, it's that big around, I guess, sits on the floor, kinda like the school has. And there's no room in the kitchen for that mixer. And they can move that mixer down to the other room, but according to Ray Jordan, that ain't gonna work either.
Who's doing the cooking?
Pat Maxwell is doing part of it, the church is doing part of it.
That's kinda just put in there.
Did I see where her?
Watch the whole folder. It says 60 inches, I don't know what's in there, but that says 60 inch. And then one stand-up mixer is what it says.
One of 16, right, two standards of.
It, it, it's not going there, they've already voted not to put it there. And the mixer will not go into the kitchen. I think Clark probably seen how small the kitchen.
Oh, yeah.
And it's a stand, it's a stand-up mixer, it's not going in the kitchen, 'cause you wouldn't be able to move around.
Well, John, on this, on this particular one, the Kyoto Community Center one, can we table it and get a little more clarity on? Do we have time to do that?
Yeah, and I mean, I, I met with, I went to Kyoto Friday, and I mean, I had her look it over, and she, she said it all was what they put in for, but yeah, I mean, we can wait on it a few, a week or so, I'm sure. And you don't have to sign it today, we can take a week or so if you need to figure it out.
Table it for now and put it on next week, get some clarification on it.
Yeah.
That way, I'll rest these up, which are all separate items.
And I was gonna just let y'all know, even though I put separate pages in every folder, the signature pages that you, that all y'all sign on there, instead of having to sign all six of them, y'all could just sign one, and we can make copies for each of those grants if you want to do that. Or you can sign each one, sign each one over.
I think we've probably, that's a good idea, and we'll probably get Ray Jordan and Bud Cole to come in during next meeting and kinda explain it, you know, the reason why they don't, don't want it in there. If it's, or somebody just called them.
Can, can there be deviations, I mean, like, say they won't let them do any kind of remodel, but they can fit in a 48-inch stove, would they be able to do that, or is it?
Generally, it's, you can always purchase something bigger, but you can't purchase something smaller. But if we can, maybe we can make it up, you know, if you go smaller, buy, if you have funding left over, get something else that is needed, just as long as your money's spent. So we, we can figure something out.
Okay, well, we'll just put, it's all out there, we'll just, we'll table a field of community grant for this meeting. I'm making motions in there.
Second.
Barton McLaury.
Yes.
Larry Watson.
Yes.
Billy Cloud.
Yes.
Now we need to move back to our 10:15 bid, item number 10. Open seal bids for courthouse heat and air repairs at 10:15 a.m., we got, looks like one.
Yeah.
There is a basement flooded in the courthouse.
I don't know, not this morning, I hadn't checked.
Oh, I mean, like.
I was doing their last week's, but.
What?
Well, I saw, I see the total there, I was just kinda looking at a couple of work. What I'm, I'm just missing it here somewhere, but this is to replace all heat and air registers in every office in the courthouse, is that right?
All the fan coals, like the entire courthouse.
Yeah.
Add fan coals back into the courtroom, replace all the piping, re-support all the piping, re-insulate all the piping, and add a few fan coals in the basement to keep your humidity under control and keep you above freezing. For, y'all froze up there a while back in the basement, all some of your chill water pipe. And, and then to, uh, we went ahead and figured a redundant pump for your circulating system down there where you've got two pumps for redundancy, so if one fails, the other one will come on automatically.
Looks like the total bid for all this work is $238,440. Anybody got any discussion of the common?
That covers every office and everything and a lot of law.
Them radiator valves that's in there that's wore out.
Yeah, we can, I'd be glad to, to take y'all and walk you down through the basement, kinda show you where some of your problems are, and then, and then your fan coals. Right now, your existing fan coals in the, in the courthouse don't have any kind of temperature control whatsoever. So when it gets hot, they just took the fan off, they just, that's all it does, is turn the fan off, so a lot of water continues to seep through the radiators. Rather than like a three-way valve or a proportional valve, you convert the heat away from the radiator, that one just continues to flow water through it. And one, one other thing we didn't include in that is, uh, this is kinda the first stage of getting everything right on the, on the, uh, the radiators and all the piping, you know, and then later on you can do something in the future, but you're kinda at the end of the line on, on some of this as far as the piping and the radiators go. They've had a pretty useful life.
End of the line like it's shot.
Well, it's, it's. The radiators are used up, and now what, what, uh.
I can see that.
There's a, there's a, that's also a worst-case scenario. I mean, there's some piping down there that I feel like can possibly be reused, but there's some piping in there that needs to be replaced. But there also needs to be, uh, right now you got a two-pipe system, so you're either heating or cooling. We can incorporate some controls there where that can be more of an automatic situation rather than a manual go there and turn it off, turn it on type of deal. And then get, get a, get a little more control on your boiler to where the boiler don't even operate until you're down below, say, 55 or 60 degrees. Right now, when your boiler's running, it's running regardless. If you need it to heat or not, it's gonna keep the water at 140 degrees in the entire courthouse, blue. And the only way they got to control the temperature is, like I said, turning the fans off of the radiator, but that still don't stop natural convection from occurring. So you get that heat in there, and so somebody goes and kills the radiator, or kills the boiler downstairs.
So with your automation, we can put on that old boiler.
That, that is included in that.
Okay.
So what, what that would do is keep your boiler out of operation, say, anything above, you know, usually around 55 degrees. So if it's above 55, you know, or, or 60, that's adjustable, but that keeps that boiler from running and using gas and heating water, because nine out of 10 times, if you're above 55, 60 degrees outside, you don't necessarily need heat at the courthouse, you know what I'm saying?
So how many radiators does this include? You got a number of them?
Uh, I don't have that in front of me, I think it's 35 or 36.
And when you talk about changing the pipe, you're talking about all the pipe that's running up, up and down from?
Between the first and second floor.
From the basement to the top?
Basement to the top.
To the third.
Now, there's some piping downstairs.
How, does that include the third floor?
Third floor will have nothing in it. Now, now what, uh, I guess Friday or Thursday was the first time I've ever been in the third floor. Third floor would be an easy fix, but there needs to be something up there to control humidity, and, and need to be able to take, if it ain't nothing but, but one or two small split systems or something like that, that you could run that up there and, and keep that air dry up there and keep it semi-conditioned for nothing other than books to keep them from getting moist and sticking together and that sort of stuff. So, and that's my recommendation.
But there's nothing for the third floor?
There is no, there is nothing on the third floor at all, there's, there's, I found two places where the piping has actually used to go up there at one time, but that's the only two places I even found that there was some water piping still up there.
There on the north wall, right?
There was one on the north wall and one on that, uh, on a, on a, kind of at the end of a hallway back there by where you go to jail. There was one set of pipes up there. Now, there's, there's, it's like I said earlier, there, there's, there's some potential to save some money on the piping, and, and it wouldn't be hard to add two more fan coals to that price and save, or the money saved on piping to put two fan coals up there on that third floor to help condition it. But you've got an open chase up there, right out, when you go through, come out of the elevator on the third floor, it goes right up in the attic. I don't know if y'all have noticed that or not, and I'm not sure why that's that way. But all of your attic space, air is coming right back down in there. And what'll happen to you is, if you're trying to condition that second floor, and you're not doing nothing on that third floor, and your attic's open too, your dew point's gonna get sky-high, so your humidity's gonna be high, and you're gonna have problems with records trying to stick together and that sort of stuff. So, well.
What do y'all think, you want to act on it today, wait and wait, and let him go through it with us a little bit more, or what's, what's the?
It's gonna have to be fixed, that's, if y'all wanna go recess or go walk through.
I'd be glad to walk through it and show you kinda what we're looking at and, and give y'all an idea, you know, like I said.
I would kinda like to do that myself, but I mean, I'm, I'm for fixing it.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I mean, if we need a motion to approve, I'm. Oh, yeah. And, and like I said, the piping, the piping we've got priced there is, is worst-case scenario, but I didn't see any other way to, to price it, you know what I'm saying, as far as.
Had to cover yourself.
Well, we had to, we gotta price it to kinda keep apples to apples. If you have five bidders here, this is what the outline is. You know, at any point in time, you take the low bidder, and then if there's money to be saved, you save money. You, you know what I'm saying? And, and there's some, uh, there's some things that I throwed in there that I feel like is a necessity, like redundant water piping, you've got one pump down there, and we've actually got a pump ordered for that system right now that should've already been here. That system spraying water down over it, down there at the bottom in that basement. It's, uh, it's not dangerous, there's nothing wrong with it, it's just wasteful, and it's, and it's caused us not, maybe not to flow as much water as what we want to flow, you know? But there's two or three things there that, that in my opinion is, is a necessity to, to keep, to keep the integrity of the building and what's in it, and, and that water piping, and, and then, like I said, heating and conditioning that basement to a certain degree is a necessity, because it all starts in the basement, you know? You know, so I mean, you wouldn't think you'd get that cold down there, but now during that 10-degree weather, you had some, you had some, you had a boiler failure, the boiler failed, and then you had some lines freeze on that northwest corner of, of the basement. But this gets everything fixed to the point to where in the future, you're open to, to, you know, chiller's running good, it's not great, but it's, it's running and it's cooling. The boiler is old, you know, eventually, but that's something that's manageable. That's, that's not a huge, huge, huge expense to replace the boiler, you know what I'm saying? The, the piping though, and the fan coals is what's, what's really, really in bad shape.
So if we get this out of the way, the fan coals and the piping, the chiller and the boiler would be the next?
Yeah, and it gives every room, it gives every room comfort control, thermostat control on, on the fan coals. Yeah, and it gives every room, it gives every room, uh, comfort control, thermostat control on, on the fan coals, uh, to where if they don't need heat, they ain't gonna heat. I mean, if they want heat, you turn the thermostat up a little bit and it'll heat them. A- as of right now, it's, it's all or nothing, you know?
So if you do anything on the third floor, will that help on the other floors?
Well, that's what I'm saying. I- 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 if there's enough piping up there on that third floor, if there's, if there's two or three spots, and I, I didn't move everything in there. I just, uh, I just found two, two old piping circuits for fan coals on the third floor. There might be more. I'm not saying there is or isn't. But it would be easy enough to take and, and tie back into your existing chiller and boiler and put a couple of fan coals. These fan coals are, are about thirty-five hundred, thirty-six hundred dollars a piece. I mean, just simple as I put it, thirty-eight hundred, something like that, depending on the size. So, so, uh, it wouldn't be a, you know, there might be enough savings, like I'm saying, in the piping down in the basement that we can afford to put two or three fan coals on that third floor and condition it. But we'll have to look at a bunch of things. It looks like maybe some of the old drain lines that went down through the chaises is gone, concrete is over. Some of the lines are coming through the wall rather than through the floor. So there's some things we'd have to look at to see what's gonna be the best way to go.
We need to get that third floor right because that's where all the core records are and I mean, that's, that's the biggest deal.
That's the deal. We work with two, three, four courthouses and that's the, I mean, that's your history right there, folks. That's what's, uh, kinda important to take care of that and keep, keep up with it and be able to. It's your history, your county, so.
What do y'all think about just putting it on hold for a week and let's go on and turn the, and the scope of work and everything that we're gonna do? Come back and prove it next week if everything looks good?
We need to call a special meeting of two commissioners will be there to do that.
Walk through it?
Or we can recess now and come back and adjourn later, just whatever, whenever he's got time to, to walk us through it.
Well, let's just, let's just finish the business here and we'll recess and go to.
Got time.
That's, that's fair enough. I think before we look at, kinda get an idea of what we're looking at doing.
Well, I mean, it, and, you know, it's a lot of money.
Yeah, absolutely.
I understand that.
Absolutely, yeah.
It's gotta be done. I mean, I ain't know that about it. It's past due. Get a motion to table for now on the courthouse heating there. Is everybody alright with that or?
We're not tableing it until.
We were gonna finish our business and then go to do it and then come back.
And then approve it then?
I thought that's what you said.
It can be taken.
Alright, let's go that route. We'll just put it on hold and move on. Okay, are we on twelve? Review and sign and approve, finalize.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Clark McLaren?
Yes.
Larry Watson?
Yes.
Billy Cloud?
Yes.
Next out of the review and sign and approve, finalize, the rate grant attached to county district.
Make a motion.
Clark McLaren?
Yes.
Larry Watson?
Yes.
Billy Cloud?
Yes.
Right there in the press table.
Yeah, but since it's Billy's grant, he has to sign this, this, the contract, right? Billy signs, it's his, it's his, it's his contract, so, or his, or his district, so he signs.
But there's, there's two of those and each one that doesn't sign. One would be mine and one would be yours.
Yeah.
Okay, item number fourteen, review and sign and approve, finalize, the rate grant up north airport road.
What are you all chipping next year, Bill?
Who, what? What are you gonna all chip? You're building same board, part of same board road next year?
Yeah, well, I don't know, uh, next up is coming here.
So that's be, that's your three?
Yeah.
That's on same board road that we just, uh, what about same board road?
So you, you put in, put the same road?
Uh, no, we, we, there'll be a different road next year coming up on the grant, when we, when we sign it. This is the road that we done this year, that same board. Road chip and all over the same board.
Okay.
Make a motion and table it.
Second.
Clark McLaren?
Yes.
Larry Watson?
Yes.
Billy Cloud?
Yes.
Item number fifteen, review and sign and approve, finalize, the rate grant up north airport road.
Clark McLaren?
Yes.
Larry Watson? Billy Cloud?
Yes.
Okay, item number sixteen, review and sign and approve, finalize, the rate grant up north forty-five fifteen, east county road eleven eight. That's district.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Clark McLaren?
Yes.
Larry Watson?
Yes.
Billy Cloud?
Yes.
Item number seventeen, review and sign and approve, finalize, the rate grant up west county district.
Make a motion to approve.
Clark McLaren?
Yes.
Larry Watson?
Yes.
Billy Cloud?
Yes.
Okay, down item number eighteen, review and sign and approve, corporations transfer the corporation chicken.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Clark McLaren?
Yes.
Larry Watson?
Yes.
Billy Cloud?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, number five, review and sign and approve, corporations and transfer the corporation. Second.
Yeah.
You kind of know what purpose, why do you bring here?
Uh, it's, it's an auction company. Really auctioned off a piece of equipment.
I always think about stuff like that. Doing what your least need work.
What, what, I don't know. It's probably fifteen S C D A. Probably will. Same continued pictures of the same S C D A, which are, they're, they're about fifteen, and then it's pressing down, and about more, and it took, it took too long. So now, now, you could go right there and see this provision as well. That's true. People would actually.
Well, something will be out here, man.
Do you want some? What's that?
Yeah, it's been, it's been a small step outside. I'm just trying to, to walk the bridge and not just hurt. So, I'm, 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 I'm.
I don't know if there's a fifteen. I don't know if there's.
You have those?
That there's a sign.
That there's a sign for the appropriations back here. I was gonna, for not to find it, it's not, I'm not really.
Fourteen, seven, fourteen, seven, fifteen.
I don't know if there's a fifteen. If you have to, you should, should have two.
Should I ask?
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know.
Larry, will I, I'll have to get off the bench and all that stuff, will I?
What are you getting, Mike? Make a motion. What are you getting, Liam?
Just.
Bunker gear.
Bunker gear and fire hose and stuff like that. Just equipment.
Yeah, I've heard this. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I'm gonna make a motion to, to plan into the. Heat and Air bid, that we take a short recess and go look at the scope of work. Probably make a motion to take a quick recess and go look at the scope of work for heat and air and cord house.
Martin McLeary?
Yes.
Larry Watson?
Yes.
Billy Cloud?
Yes.
Uh, exit board would like to, um, take a brief recess and go look at the cord house.
Second. Ray Miller?
Yeah.
Uh, Joe Clement?
Yes.
Jerry Terrell?
Yes.
Second.
Martin McLeary?
Yes.
Larry Watson? Billy Cloud?
Yes.
I had Brandy check the balance this morning in the cord house maintenance and operation account. It was one million, one hundred sixty-six thousand, two hundred thirty dollars and seventy-five cents. I think that that accounts what we should use to do this heat and air project.
I'd like to make a suggestion, I, I agree with that, but just like that Carazak money that's sitting there that's not being used, could we? I mean, it's already been approved to use that, because it's approved that we spent the money, correct?
I, I didn't say the Carazak money on the last budget, I thought it had already been.
I believe there's a hundred and sixteen thousand in there. But I may be wrong.
But, eh, I mean, we feel confident that we're gonna have a pretty good, you know, it's, it's hard to say on the new building, but we feel like maybe a hundred and fifty thousand or somewhere along in there, maybe a little bit more. But, uh, I don't think we oughta be doing anything on that until we see.
Right.
So I think it'd be a safer avenue to, to use this money right here.
I agree.
That would be cool, we don't wanna.
Yeah, I agree.
Take out that money, just.
You need a motion to accept the bid?
Uh, yeah, I'd like, I'll make a motion to accept the bid and.
Is it hard?
I'm gonna say contingent upon what we just, what I just said about, you know, the scope of work.
Check out when he gets his plans here, things off.
But, uh, I mean, we, we got some prices several years ago on some of this stuff, and I don't really think he's at, I mean, I don't think it's out of line to consider inflation being what it is.
No, with everything that he's gonna do, put a double, double pump down there and automate that boiler. And there's a possibility we could get the boiler replaced if there's enough slack in the, in the piping.
Yeah, that's what he said.
So, I'll make a motion to accept the bid, is it harbor?
I'll say.
Harbor.
Harbor, from harbor.
As long as it's, as he gets his plans out and everything's in there, like we said, right?
Yeah, we'll get a written scope of, break down.
Martin McLeary?
Yes.
Larry Watson?
Yes.
Billy Cloud?
Yes.
Make a motion.
I can only keep coming out of these things.
Second.
Joe Clement?
Yes.
Jerry Terrell?
Yes.
Make a motion to turn over. Second.
Martin McLeary?
Yes.
Larry Watson?
Yes.
Billy Cloud?
Yes.
Make a motion to overturn the exit.
Second.
Joe Clement?
Yes.
Jerry Terrell?
Yes.